Ike's not gonna be here?
He's been here.
The state's already canceled, haven't they?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just gonna put this state number all out. State at Silver.
I'll go ahead and call a late order at 103. Ask if there's not a promotion of the management lands.
Well, we've not got to meet them yet, so just give us a message on that.
Door open.
On that agenda, state number four is gonna put a transportation down.
Transportation, CTP.
Yeah. It's probably whatever date, because they said the date that...
Thirteenth.
That one we're gonna make it get with them. Was that just a completion date?
The nineteen, the nineteen would be a week after the test. So I'd say they'll...
But we're gonna make the twenty-first, so we just have to have it on that day. See, I've been thinking days Wednesday, I'd probably just don't make.
Oh, no, I thought it was Wednesday.
So I said, let's just do you guys. And no, it's not.
Are you gonna get the maintenance taken off of the...
Yeah, we're just gonna report the maintenance and everything.
Okay.
And get this election, get this election, I went so in pulling your work on it.
Oh, yeah, water out. I am gonna do them five, two, three.
You want them to do them late?
Next week. Come on, I can believe it, it cleansed all some.
I'll put the lead in. It's our city pays Grand County Comprehensive Transportation. They've got one for the region, they've got one for the county.
County, correct.
What's the maintenance grid, sir?
Second. On old business, the May Wilson Wardville situation.
What did we were saying about that?
Well, they thought they found the leak, but it went out there and it was not leaking. And all, but, and then you go back out there again, and it's running, but there's no water on the inside of the house. And go down to the basement and no leaks down there.
What did she do about it this month?
Did Maggie do better this month?
And we already gave her two, but it's...
Well, they've got, we've, we've froze it too.
She don't have none this...
But, but...
Not just, not just her.
Well...
Something's gotta be done.
I know, but, actually, she gets them too, we'll answer what she... But we're trying to have a check on it, tell them.
Right, yeah, yeah, of course, she's... She can't even think of anything else.
Well, Mitch is supposed to be having winter stand...
See, that's why he, it's taking him so long to get it. One of the banks has got something held up on, kind of over some CD or something that they can't... Said that she's got, but they don't have, or... Something that goes to the clerk's court.
And what we need to do?
I was gonna make a suggestion that we just tell Mitch that from the meter to the house needs to be replaced on their side.
Well, the meter ain't running though.
Well, at times it is, at times it's a problem.
Let you, I mean, that must sure stress.
It would, it...
Ah, it come up.
But down on the lower straits there, you know how some of them gullies run? And, and out, because it stays wet down there at the corner of Snyder Hill.
Oh, that's that drain off the corner of... Or off the hill, where it comes out there to bottom of Snyder Hill, I think.
It runs down to Snyder Hill, doesn't it?
Yeah, comes out right there to the bottom.
I know, I know, when it comes to rain, if it freezes out there, it's ice really, of course.
I believe she's, I believe whole place running with water. But when I'm Mitch going to see, he needs to, somebody can figure out what's going on.
They say these hundred people run their water when they think it's gonna be bad.
She is bad, if she run it all when it's on.
Well, you'll have somebody with her from here on out, looks like.
I hope so.
Daily, but nobody's gonna buy out from them and sit there today.
That'll take care of the problem. I think that'll take care of the problem.
Lee, her current bill is five thirty-one fifty-six. And what they just read the other day, her usage is five thousand fewer than fifty, so it's dropping.
It's dropping, man.
Still five thousand gallons, one every lucky living by itself?
It's still high for her, yeah.
All right, nice.
Just turn laboratories and mows.
And then they got...
And they're back in the fifties, so they...
They've got to move, move in.
Yeah, they, they supposed to replaced everything in her house. Till we figure out what's going on, you know, once she gets a worker in there.
Keep checking on her?
And, uh, you want to think it'd be wise to go ahead and tell Mitch to need to get that replaced from the minute, go, you're not looking, probably twenty, twenty foot to the house.
Let's just table it.
Be up to them, and I think after this month, if she's, she went from what the month before, previous month.
Well, bill about five hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-six cents.
Yeah, so she used how many thousand gallons?
Thirty thousand versus fifty-two.
So she went from thirty to five, you know it ain't a stress leak, it's gotta be something she's running.
I know, but still five thousand gallons for...
That's a lot, that's a lot for her, yeah.
I mean, the reason that's probably, we just had one bad storm, or one time it's supposed to snow.
I think maybe we could, maybe we could let them get her cat worker, whoever's gonna be sitting with her to look and see what's going on like that.
They might find out someone else, you know it's...
Yeah, well, we need to, we need to brief her too on what to look for about the water and check it.
So we're gonna want to see, we just wanna get...
We don't give a grade?
One grade?
Yes, ma'am, I think we should.
Okay, on the highest bill she's saying, yeah.
But I, you know, just Mitch checking on her right now, looks like you've cut twenty thousand gallons, I think, right, add twenty thousand this month. So she's gotta be running through her spec and... I, I think you can get her straightened out, when somebody's there daily.
Well, it's easy to forget and leave it on. Older person, I do it sometimes, but...
Goodness. The motion wasn't missed anymore.
Motion? Yeah, I made my...
All right, go to, okay.
Okay, uh, May Wilson's taking care of the school, sewer bill. Gets it ten percent. And, uh, think it needs to be back to full now, because it's been over a year.
I am, but give them a break, help them out. What do you think, Bobby?
Let me form a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I would say if we have a motion, then we go back to...
We've helped them out.
School back down.
We've figured out...
Full.
Figured out how much gray water they are using.
I'm sorry?
We figured out how much gray water they are using, it's not... They, they could keep them on back in the sewer system if they put the replacements on them. Ain't nothing, I mean, nothing we can do.
They've not tried to have the sale, they... Okay, that's all, the overview, is there any other that's not on the, that you know of? I think, uh, do know that, uh, we've got all the thank yous out for everybody that's done the donations, volunteered and everything. So we had two, two things that came through. The fishing derby was a great success, the Stanley Feed was a great success.
I didn't catch for one, you might, oh, put it in my hand.
And all, and, uh, well, we, we worked kinda come together as a team, okay, I mean...
Yeah.
And, and it was, uh...
Sherry worked real...
Sherry, that, that's another thing that we, we need to go, we need to discuss, should remind you.
Yeah, we need to do something to Sherry, all her work she done.
Because she took the football run with it and...
If it's give her a pat, then I'll volunteer.
It'd be easy, right?
And she worked, Sherry worked hard.
And all, and, and hours, after, after work and stuff, and, oh, and I think we need to accommodate...
Well, thank you, Sherry, well, thank you.
She's, she's got that Marshall Burksfield smile on her face.
You know, we need to put up, after a time card, talk, got her, they need to put, if they not picked up their gifts, they need to get them.
Okay, I spoke to Melissa today, and she's gonna just okay with ringing, but she said that, uh, you get a couple weeks, guys, before you go out in the morning. She might have a problem, she said she would, we got like a...
Cow a month.
And she'll take care of it.
Don't come right.
I was thinking, we need to do something.
Don't come right.
Just put them both a time, talk at a time.
It's all set for, after we're to keep her, let's get them out of the purge festival.
It's coming up.
We're gonna work for it.
But before you know it. Let, let's see, is there anything else in May I've got? Just the dates and starts when?
Dates, spring dates.
Thirtieth or thirty-fourth, Danny?
Thirtieth, I believe.
Yeah, I'm thirty, Tom Friday, but, yeah.
No, thirty, not, uh, twenty-fourth is the feeding boxes.
All right, well, what, 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 what is supposed to set a date for one of those youth, uh, things?
Yeah, sure, we can get that thing figured in. Which night we wanna do it, it should be on Saturday night, I think.
Yeah, yeah, Saturday evening.
Yes, yeah.
It depends on that.
Four dark, yeah.
About three till seven, or something like six, or something.
Yeah, that'd be good, they like that.
It kinda gives you extra evening coo, where it's still...
I think we get four to seven, or four to eight, or five to eight, or something like that.
Four dark, I would get out at four dark.
I think she's working on that, she's getting around some of the busy...
She is, she's...
Uh, as far as Ike, uh, the gravel situation, also might need to get another weed eater. That, since we've got, we're doing all the, all our mowing together, we've already purchased three.
Oh, that question we get, why do we have to have...
Did you get ten, ten more for Christmas, can't we borrow it?
Yeah, but the doctor ain't fully released her to run weed.
Sick of that.
Yeah, let's, let's, we had, well, we had to have what we had.
The bush hog worked wonderful.
Oh, really?
It's good. I know. Okay, let's get that all night again there. I know the, the little aisle is down, and the flyers that, we, we had to wait till the killing frost and stuff, but it's right now, uh, the fifteenth, I think, is supposed to be the, the old timers' last frost.
Not, but if you go by thunders in February.
In twenty-sixth.
You may two more.
May twenty-fifth, I think.
Yeah, go way two more frost. Not no killing frost, but...
Well, that, that, that'll wait, watch the signs.
Yeah.
Down to, down to twenty-fifth of February. I don't know what that means, but...
But I don't think that would affect our fountain level.
No. Oh, we need to get that going, that's so pretty.
All righty, uh, that being said, Mr. Merchant.
May I come to the table?
Yeah.
We've got five minutes.
Okay. For the record, this young lady is Lisa Buchanan, she's with me, she's trying to keep me on the straight and narrow.
Charlie. Let's see, my hair's starting to...
Well, Lisa, that's up to you. First, I wanna say that any, if I'm expressing a political opinion in writing, I am not slamming any one of you individually as a political opinion, so I've got no beef on a personal basis with anybody. You've probably all seen a flyer that I sent out on the Robbinsville thing, and I really appreciate, uh, that we had some representation supporting the people. But these documents, I'm not gonna, oh, gosh, it'd take me forever to explain everything here. But this is all information on Agenda Twenty-One, I've been studying it for six years. This is a deceptive organization that comes in, they use the grant monies to get your attention, to try to get you to do things. Now, at the last meeting, uh, the one that, uh, Mr. Smith, uh, was concerned about the property rights, I don't believe I've seen anything that says that you have rescinded that. Now, I saw the news in the papers about the issues with the highway, and then also that there were some other issues in there, the corridor cake. And then, but you also had some other issues with, uh, with the great organization, and you have disassociated yourself with involvement with them. I, did any of you see the second flyer that I sent around? I sent the one on the...
I never knew it was first.
Okay, well...
Now, here's a copy, here.
Okay, I have a copy of the second flyer that I sent to the whole county. And it basically started out by saying, asking the county to, uh, and I've got a couple of extra here, I guess, Ms. Russo may want one, and perhaps Secretary. And I started out in there by saying that I'm asking the county to go ahead and follow your lead and get rid of Agenda Twenty-One. Well, let's, let's call it great, for the purposes of our meeting here. What is most important about this flyer, about halfway down the page, you'll start seeing some quotations, where I have quoted things directly out of the documents that they provide. The Southwestern Commission and the Community Foundation essentially created great because they're trying to push an agenda, an extreme environmental agenda. And some of the things that I really wanna point out is, at some point, about halfway down the first page, maybe a little farther, it says, "The next step funds provides ten thousand dollars to nonprofit organizations to implement tools from the toolbox. And it grants offer specific activities to help the town or county implement one or more of the recommended strategies of the toolbox." Well, I'm sure that they don't tell you that, but what the toolbox is, the Region A Mountain Landscapes Initiative Toolbox, this was created, they started creating this document in two thousand and six. They didn't, this was actually published in two thousand and nine, as evidenced by the copyright date on the, on the second page. This is their plan for Graham County and the other seven counties in western North Carolina. After they created this document, then they started going to the different counties and having these charrette meetings, where they were trying to say, um, they would say, "We want your opinion locally, we wanna know what you want for Graham County today, because this is going to be your plan." But in fact, they had this plan, because they didn't come to Graham County until late twenty twelve and twenty thirteen, so they already knew what they wanted in two thousand and nine, when they finished, uh, producing this document. One of the most important things on this document is on page twenty-three. They reference the International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives. That is what we know as ICLEI, is the Major Implementation Organization for the United Nations Agenda Twenty-One. And here is a document that they really don't like me to have, this is right at the front. This is the Agenda Twenty-One Local Planning Guide. This document tells how to make this document and how to implement it. So, so what, what's going on here, and this, this is at the bottom of the page, ICLEI. Now, I can give you an electronic copy of this document, but I can't, what do I do with a fully printed document? Actually, I don't even think I'm legally gonna give you that electronic copy. So, what they're doing...
We can pull Agenda Twenty-One up, we can get it off the internet.
Yeah, well, this document, you're gonna be hard pressed to find on the internet. There are people like me that have spread it around to other people that have been looking into this for years, so you can find it. But it's officially been taken off of all the Agenda Twenty-One sites, because it's a kind of a damning document. And in here, when they talk about sustainable development, when you get into page twenty-three in here, it starts with, sustainable development actually has three components. You have the environmentally sustainable component, social sustainability, and economic sustainability. So when they tell you, "We want sustainable government," what you and I are thinking they want is, "Oh, well, we need enough trees if we're burning wood in our fireplace, we don't wanna burn all the trees at once, because we're gonna run out of wood." That is not their concept. They want to start with improving the social, uh, well-being of all the people on the planet first. So they're gonna wanna come in here and put what we call stack and pack housing, and subsidize housing. So they're gonna go way beyond what you think. So when you see the word comprehensive, and a moment ago, I heard you say something about your agenda with the comprehensive, uh, plan, something's coming up.
Transportation, Doc.
Transportation. When they use the word comprehensive, the reason they wanna do that, they don't wanna come in and do it just in Graham County, because Graham County may have a problem with it. So when they have a comprehensive thing, they go to several outline counties, and it dilutes your vote. So they're able to get things passed on a larger regional level. So if you see the word regionalism, that is another way that they're going to take away, uh, the citizens' rights to their government. We may elect the government officials, but then if you delegate your responsibility to regional boards, we have no way of controlling that. We can't vote the regional board out. So there is nothing about the grants that are being offered by great that have anything to do with the well-meaning of the county. And so one of the things that I wanted to do today is, if you have not considered rescinding your vote on the bicycle pathway, I would strongly recommend that you consider that. I do not know the language in the resolution, I just don't know. When people come in and try to hustle you into making a quick decision on a plan or a contract which has not been finalized, I used to work for attorneys, and it doesn't make any difference what you promised someone before a contract. You can have proposals, you can have oral conversations, but when you put your name on a contract, it is the final words in that contract that are going to rule. And what you're going to wind up seeing is the contracts, the final contracts are going to be big and long and incomprehensible. And a lot of people say, "Well, they promised us this, this is what they tell us it's gonna do, and so we're comfortable with that, so let's go ahead and sign it." Don't do that with these people. And again, in that document I gave you, I've printed, the one that I printed you, I spaced it a little bit easier to read. When I sent it out to all the people in Graham County, I sent it as a one-page single space, which is very difficult to read. Pay attention to all of those quotations in the bottom, and this little book right here has the information. The first section in here is on great, and you can see are these little tabs pages that I have, this is where some of it comes from. The second section is on the Southwest Commission, and, so I looked extensively at them, and you can also see that there are little tabs in their documents that I've used. And the last section is on the Community Foundation. I thoroughly understand what these organizations are doing and how they work. In the past, the people talked about Agenda Twenty-One, they tried to tell you from the top down, United Nations, ICLEI, NGOs, nonprofits, and that doesn't tell anybody what's happening. So what you hear, or what you see, is this pretty green, green canopy on this money tree, and everybody says, "Hey, I can help my town, I'll just pluck some of these money baskets off the tree." You do not see the invasive root system that is under this tree, and is the true intent of what they're doing. So I'm probably...
Before you go much further, those, those statements that you've got in your book is your opinion.
No.
You know, us three, we do see, we're not blooming idiots, so...
No, no, no.
We do see what's going on.
Well, yes, and I'm so proud of it, this last decision you made.
Let me, let me finish too. What we do wanna do is, is to make sure that we speak for the public, not Hubert Merchant, not Steve Hooper, we speak for the public. That, that's why our decision to, to come out of great, great has done some good things in this game. Great has done some real good things with the school system and, and other stuff. We're, we're not against great in no way, don't, don't get us wrong. We are against the issue of you making a plan or a study where it affects a private landowner in our town. Now, what we ask great to do, on, on anything they've done, is go to each individual landowner and say, "Hey, man, I wanna study your property, put a bicycle path on." They failed to do that. That is our option out on great. Far as the road, I don't care if you don't great's for the road or against the road. That, that's, that's up to those members, that's a freedom of speech, whoever you are. But, you know, don't, and I'm not saying it's a bad way, don't try to sell Agenda Twenty-One to, to us that, that we don't, you know, people knows what's going on. We've allowed it to go on for a long time. But now those are your views, that's not this board's views, or, so let's, let's just...
Well, I certainly apologize if I came off, came off in that manner. But one of the things that is happening in a lot of other cities is, they have these charrette meetings, and then they go and they present documents to county commissioners or local councilors. And then they say, "Everybody in the county is all for this," but statistically, this has not been the case. In the case of Graham County, there's about nine thousand people, maybe a little bit less. And it turns out that when you go to the charrettes, one tenth of one percent of the population of Graham County actually was in favor of these things, and they're saying that everybody was, and that's not the case. And this is consistent with how they've worked of, of other places. In Greenville, South Carolina, they had three hundred and fifty participants, the population is four hundred and fifty thousand, that's point zero, 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 eight percent. And New York capital region, I'm not sure exactly where that is, had a hundred and fifty attend the charrettes, and they have a population of one million, and so that was point zero, 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 two percent. So by having these meetings, which they manipulate, the great facilitators manipulate, they then alter the, the results of those meetings, they come to the commissioners, whoever, whoever the ruling bodies are, and they say these things, and the commissioners say, "Well, it looks like a lot of people in our county are for this," when in fact, that may not be true. And I would like to compliment you on something.
That's where you need to make, that's where this board makes their opinion, you know. We, we were elected to represent every individual inside the city, Mr. Robinson, not five of great, not five of Jimmy Swagert, Buncher, whoever else, you know, we are elected to represent this whole thing. Not, not one million.
Not the county, yeah, not the nine thousand.
We're, we're not, we, you know, and, and when these, when these committees come to that governor and board, they were elected to make decisions for everybody, not great. And if you make that decision for great or anybody else, you know, I think you're in the wrong. That, that's one reason we made our decision, based on what the people in town were telling us.
Well, I certainly support...
Southwest Commission people, you know, it's, I, I like Southwest Commission people, I do, I, I, we have received lots of grant money, that we're not bound to anything, to Southwest Commission. I guess the best friend that, that Southern Western County's got is Bill Gibson. Far as, from orphanages to, oh, God, what they haven't worked.
Cat, yeah.
Yeah, but, but some of the stuff that they, you know, when it comes to the environmental issue, they work on stuff like that, and whether you buy it or not, that's, that's your elected official. That ain't, you know, that ain't the Southwest Commission, I mean, they're, they're into a lot of stuff, I, I...
And two, they, they don't go out and try to force you to build, build new sewer plant. But if you wanna go after money for it, they help you come up with the funding and stuff for it.
Well, I would argue that in the funding that they give you, there will also be some contracts, and that you may be buying into more than you would really like to buy into. This is the history of the way, uh, these organizations operate, and I'm just trying to make people aware of that.
That, that, again, that, that's this board, eyes have been opened. All right, and, and all, and we are making, and... And we're making and striving in every way to make everything that is probably done on this tape, six or seven hundred that's in the city limits. That is, that is to their best benefit. Whether it be purchasing that weed eater or signing this grant or whatever for the new sewer plant down here. We had to make some decisions that, we doesn't think it's coming up, whatever. That wasn't just something that's addressed in because John Henry down here, you know, was in favor of it. It wasn't, we pulled everybody together in one sound decision.
Do I think what you're talking about's going on across America? I sure do.
I agree, a hundred percent.
I don't know, and they probably gonna start these little rural areas where a bunch of dummies and vulnerable to all this and everything, but, like I say, when it comes down to, we put it out to the public and we vote our little fable minds, is this, our litmus test is, is this the best thing for the town of Robbinsville? For the majority of the town of Robbinsville? If it don't pass out, we don't go on.
And I am not questioning your hearts. I am only doing the best I can to make sure that you have as much information as you can. I want you to be aware that that cheese is sitting in a mousetrap.
Yes, I appreciate that.
I do, and I think as a county as a whole, with the environmental issues that Graham County has seen over the years, they might think we're redneck hillbillys sitting back here on the side of the road. But push us, push us as far as you wanna push us, and stuff will start turning around. We've sat back, we're easygoing people, and we've took a lot through the history of time. We've let stuff come in that we should've bit the head off of it and not let it got started. But people from Graham County has opened their eyes to a lot of stuff.
Well, I'm particularly proud that you did, in that last article that you read from Lisa's article and the one that James Fudd did, that you seem to have said enough is enough, and that is, I am very proud of it.
We're glad people like you are interested in what's going on around, you know, counties and towns. A lot of people got the, in time anymore, they can't do anything, it's just, man, that's never, that's never, you can always do something, just speaking out and, you know, I agree with a lot of what you've got there, there's a lot in that I will disagree with. That's just, I mean, you know, that's just-
My opinion and your opinion.
Yeah, you know, there's a lot of, you can take any book and turn it around, flip it around, make it sound like the end of time.
I think if you-
There's a lot of stuff we've seen over the years. Yeah, we're very aware, I mean, we are, we, you give that much, they take that much. The next thing you know, they're walking in your boots with it. Now, that's just fact, we've seen, it's, ooh. I think we're on the same page with property rights and, you know, enough's enough.
There's condemnation stuff and all this.
I scratched out a living from my little piece of property, it longed for me.
After that hurricane, the FEMA spent all their money on Katrina hurricane cleanup. They come in Europe and made us pay these ungodly flood insurance premiums. I mean, they just shoved it down our throat. I was at the meeting down there, and there was five of us people stood up and asked the commissioners to pass it, and two hundred of them said, "No, please don't pass it." Well, the commissioners listened to them two hundred and eighty and said, "That's five." And then they were down there within a year or two begging them to get back in it because, just like Land Cody said, if I was to vote for Land Cody today, I'd vote for him because he said, "I know this is shut down our throat, but we don't have a choice." And sometimes they put it on you, "We don't have a choice, you choose the less with the two eagles and stuff." And you always have a choice, you can, but planning is good if it's done right. Fail to plan is to plan to fail. You gotta have some vision or the people perish. You gotta look ahead. I mean, there's gotta be, we gotta be planning for sewer lines and water lines five years from now, or a new sewer plant thirty years from now. I mean, people, we gotta be looking ahead some. But it's overdone and overrated, and this comprehensive transportation program where they're trying to tell us, we might not need a new interstate there here, they've never done it in all these other counties. They didn't tell Swain County to have it studied down, or Cherokee County, or Jackson County, just when it comes to Graham County and while this Forest Service property is, they said, "Hey, you better study that a little bit."
Where's the view?
I think they'll do that down there, and that's what I'm gonna stay with.
Well, I'm neutral on the road because I just haven't followed it. But I did like something you said, and I want, one day I wanna catch you outside and let you expound on it. No, in good way, because the only legitimate argument I've heard is that our roads can't handle large transportation trucks. And so you made the analogy that Stanley has to send his furniture out into little trucks, which costs them twice as much in transportation. Now, that is a legitimate argument, and I wanna talk to you more about that because if I'm actually running for this commissancy, and if I should accidentally did it, then these are the kinds of things that I need to come to educate myself on.
Yeah, it's a shame, we are, there's little towns that run road, you know, trailer lands restrictions. But as far as a county, I don't know another county in the state, I've tried to research and see, there's another one, we're on the, that's got road restrictions on land and trail.
Now, is that a Department of Transportation, or is that something the county did?
That's the OT.
Yeah, it was done back when, you know, like years ago, when there's just gravel roads and that.
I find that as a compelling argument. People say, "Oh, we're gonna be able to get you to the hospital quick if you have a heart attack." I've got heart problems, if I have it, if it's that bad and two minutes is gonna make a difference, I'm gonna die in Graham County, and that's why I moved up here.
If the weather's not permitting, if that helicopter can't fly, more than likely, you're gonna die. More than likely, you're gonna die.
Though county doctor, you should say.
I don't wine on cheese, my daughter died seven minutes out on the four lanes in ice.
Fifty-five mile an hour, seventy is not gonna save.
Seven minutes, you know, seven minutes, she died seven minutes out. It took us twenty minutes about it to get over the mountain because it's so foggy that. I don't want another child to die seven minutes out, they might, you know, seven minutes. If we'd had a four lane, well, she wouldn't have lived anyway, but seven minutes, well, it ain't worth the, it ain't worth the risk. It ain't worth the risk having to bet your life on a helicopter fly. I mean, that damn thing, you think of wrong with it, Jesus nut comes loose in a tail, it won't fly.
Well, I do want you all to know that my political opinion, when I write these things, it's nothing against you as individual people. And I try to be halfway decent about it, but I also wanted to make a good point. It's like when you use that paddle and you stick it in the bucket for storage, you gotta make sure you get it stirred up.
You come to a great place right here, I'll just word it, there's no politics, there's no politics here. There's no politics. We don't care if you're Democrat, we don't care if you're Republican, you're a human being when you come in here. There's no affiliation with the town of Robbinsville. Politics don't mean nothing to us.
Never been brought up.
Never will be, we're human.
I suspect I have gone over my five minutes.
We went over it for you.
We went over it for you, yeah. We're pretty proud of your input though.
I'm gonna get back outside.
Good having you.
Thank you, that's interesting, I'm gonna join in.
This door's always open.
Please, oh God, may I, I'll join this thing.
Pretty girl, hey, you got the bright eye.
You probably know her, she was the manager in McDonald's for a while, and her grandfather is Paul T. Stone of the Mission, yeah.
And Danny McKenna. And your Jeff's your dad?
Jeff's daughter, Jess's older.
Got you there, yeah. I know you couldn't stand.
That's your uncle.
Yeah.
Hey, would it be too much to ask y'all to sort of voting for me?
Wait till we go out to nowhere.
Yeah, don't. You're asking the wrong questions, wrong time right now.
I think- Next thing up is the carnage movement. We got notification during our first thing with Hickory that easements are done. I think there's one or two things they just need to be at, wasn't Bobby?
Yeah, I think they'd help me in the day.
Yeah, they would, so they will be in today.
We need to get those to Leonard, Leonard Phillips as well, and Eddie.
Yeah, before they spend a lot of whales down there?
Yeah, we need to get those three signed and Collins is signed where they can start lower end.
Randall Phillips, them have signed?
They done got the, who are they, were they working?
Just came down the property land.
The woodwork board.
Okay. They are working in there.
Yeah, yeah, they're done working.
Send that dirt fine, yeah.
They can work that one, it's-
It's on our easement.
It is, it's on the town, it's no changing it, so they can work it as long as it's down to fourteen feet. They don't have to have one of them.
Anything else on that easement stuff? CTP jacket number four.
Well, that's on the computer, and everybody will have, Philip Morris wants to send us a copy of it. It's an actual Graham County Comprehensive Transportation Plan, they've been working on it one year, over a year. It's a hundred and twenty-two pages, I've read about twenty-two pages of it, I was hoping to have half of it read today. But I'll test the border and after you get that first page or two, it's hard just to focus. I've read about four or five pages, my eyes go, and then, so I'll try to knock it out to the twentieth? May twentieth, we already be over at Southwestern with that meeting. We're not reaching Agenda Twenty One, because they're gonna pass that thing, and then, is it this Thursday, the often things at Cherokee?
Right, right.
Did they ever call you back and tell you it was on there? They sent us, me a text message, I think I sent it.
An email.
An email. Bobby's on there too, because I felt his app sent it in too.
Whatever email you put on there.
I sent an email for me and him.
Yeah, as long as you got that, we'll have email confirmation.
Matt, come on in. That's this Thursday, what time's the dinner, Steve?
At five-thirty at Harris Hotel Ballroom.
Oh, right. I don't know who Bobby, I think it's upstairs where they do concerts, I think.
Oh, I bet he is up there.
Time place I know, unless they have it where they buy the buildings.
They'll pay for this study too, the casino.
I think it was a regular Southwestern man, so they're probably paying for it, paying for it.
There was two.
As representatives, and this is important issue for towns, where is Graham County Transportation, but the town of Robbinsville, town of San Tait, and town of Fontana's in there too.
In the middle part, yeah.
We need to, we need to, for example, the Robbinsville part of it, it lays bread by Thursday. Now, if you pull yours up, get to find the Robbinsville part, Steve, put everybody a copy of it, get me, make a copy and put them all. We need to have Brad that one, go ahead and have Thursday, at least, at least some of it, so we know what I'm talking about. Or if we have any questions. We don't, I don't know a thing about what you said about Fontana or San Tait or whatever, but, I mean, the county commissioners, I know a hundred and twenty-two pages of it, just one time was about one.
Also-
If you're getting anyone to write me in for Senator-
Looked up, yeah.
We'll do that, okay.
Nothing, we'll take, go right, let's keep running. Just Senator or Representative, I'll take you. I bet I'll say.
I'll take you.
But we don't need, what's the line?
That's our, you're right.
I'm getting me a mango, I might buy a tissue.
Don't you?
Yeah, let's keep it going.
Yeah, this does scratch, but yeah, it's marking.
And the Southwestern maiden is the twentieth, it's eighth and the frank.
How can I forget that? You got them all?
Well, I got them all ready, we just need to give them sound.
Okay. She's all right.
Sounds good. Thank you, Matt.
Good, Matt.
We got all of these.
You got it all?
Yeah, we got all figured out.
When are you gonna, Friday?
Either week, I'll give you a call, probably more.
That's fine, thank you.
Not me, too much at lunchtime anymore.
Are you over there, David?
They get more ideas. I had to go get something, I'm on medicine for my hip, I'm still steroids, they gave me to take seven days.
They went back.
I was about to stop by the table, I had to get moving. But they sent this, this on the fourth time, now, I know you said the same thing four times. If you heard him watch, you heard it all. I keep doing that with somebody, they're gonna have to tell me something.
I don't know, Matt, kinda scared a little bit, I mean, Ziegler's gonna be completely out of control.
Would it tell my family, Mr. Tom?
Mandy, what me, Dan, like, yesterday, I was gonna ask you, you know, it could be done, because I don't have to be here. It could be done this week.
But you should gotta present the budget to us. But see, that's, it really needs presented that firstly.
Well, we was talking about maybe Monday, presented Monday, and then finally, you-
Which Monday?
No, it has to be done by the last. It's gotta lay, it's gotta lay out June day.
Ten days.
Oh, we're getting it, really?
It's gonna let first week, yeah.
I gotta look at it.
That one weekend, the third weekend, June, no, no. When do you decide, Mandy? The third weekend, June, I'm gonna be-
It wouldn't get it to the-
The twenty-third.
That's the sixteenth, the sixteenth is starts at-
Yeah, I'm gonna be done that one week.
If it gets in on the second, we could-
Let it lay to the-
Late twenty-third.
We're gonna leave the morning of the second, we're gonna leave the morning of the second.
Yeah, see, if we could go ahead-
All it is, is I just have to present it, and then it has to lay out ten days, it has to be presented.
It has to be these days, right?
Yeah, well, it don't have to be, but I always do, and even the night, I can present it, it's just, it has to be presented.
And they're on table for ten days, but-
And technically, I mean, it's not gonna go into the paper. If I present it on that Monday, it's not gonna come out on the paper to the press, so it just depends on how you're on with it.
We're working tonight, tomorrow night, on the budget.
I can just question, maybe it's why I-
We've done, we've done, we've done work on it twice. And all, and again, some of the stuff that you're looking-
But June meetings are just gonna totally, there's not really gonna be June meetings, it's gonna have no order whatsoever. Probably not gonna be one till the end of the month. Y'all are on the first week, Steve's on the second week, I'm on the third week.
Says we're gonna be on the first week too. When you gonna present, the whole week, yeah?
That's, what I say, it can be any time, either before y'all leave on the second, before he leaves on the night, as long as it's presented to y'all, and then it lays out ten days. But that last week in June, say, week, June twenty-third is when it's gonna be y'all's meeting. That's like I say, it takes up first week, and y'all gotta go, as I always said, the second week he's gone, third week I'm gone, next to the fourth.
On the second, June sixth.
Yeah, because we leave that morning of June sixth, we can do it prior to-
Just you come in here and I present it to you, and then that's it. There's no, there's no-
There's no, I mean, you know, what it said, it has to be formally presented with an openly, with an open, well, kinda like a, be like a special hearing.
Not even gonna be a meeting, you just, you hear the budget.
And red heavy junk.
When you look at it, look over it.
And then you let it lay out for, you can let it lay out for whatever how long, just that twenty-third.
Well, hey.
And then changes can be made, well, until you get adopted.
Yeah. But during that ten-day period, can we make changes in? Or does that play out ten more days after we make changes?
It would.
Make changes after the last meeting.
It just has to, but what she proposes, that's for ten days.
What I present, she didn't pass to be out for ten days.
I mean, and see what-
Nature has to be on the twenty-third.
We're still gonna be shooting in the dark on some stuff on account of, of the new sewer plant because it's not been up and running for a full year.
Well, I, that, when you start that, you know, formers on that thing, we're gonna be able to tweak all the pump fires.
Yeah.
We can turn half of them off, we think, we think we're gonna be able to turn half of them off. Get a tag, yeah. I think, I think we might see it.
Then I tell you.
A reduction in fire.
Know the slug is gonna be one thing that hurts, that's what I agree with. I don't know what we're gonna do.
We really need to make contact back with the gentleman after, know where Grove and Rafferty's seen if he's still interested in it.
Now, Daniel, I think the mayor's birthday in a couple weeks, so I'll look and see. But you'll be able to go out to the site and see the building application, that's gonna be the cheapest way. We just went many of it too. These plant processes are so good, you know, it's so clean, and that's what we shoot for, the cleanness of it, that it don't send any particles to the current, to the, every, every tank. We're running them extra time now, trying to cut them down, but, you know, that's too good of a job.
Well, you can look in the base- Well, you can look in the basin of the, of the, the lacs and tell the thing technical segmentation. Because if they was, you'd be seeing a buildup, you was having a flush. And I mean, you'd have a slug to, eventually, in a, in a long run, you'd have a slug to build up and in if you had any particles going through that.
Yeah, even in your filter.
In the filter, yeah. But I mean, that's, that's the only place, I mean, we talked about today, walking up our port of raw sewage, dumping in, and lasts twelve hours. It's clearer than once you're coming into the lake. I mean, it's, it's eerie.
Need to look for mass hollers, where they can haul tractor trailer load, you know. Get them out at one time, a processing plant. If I think we got a good slug, it's a good viable process slug, I mean, it wouldn't be too hard to make a compote, you know, a compote station, we give it away, but probably don't want to use it.
Is there anything else that needs to be brought up? Have you got anything else, Bobby, that you know of?
Everything motion, Jerry? Unanimous.